Good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 11th, 2017. Happy New Year. Hope everyone had good holidays and thank you for attending today. We do have a full house for the first time in awhile. Welcome to Kinsey Johnson joining the crew. We're glad to have you aboard. Our first item of business is the election of officers for 2017. Thompson had an email about that regarding it, but Tom, if you want to summarize that briefly?
Sure. So, basically, this is one time of the year that I get to officially run the meeting. But, so, the Code of Virginia requires that the local planning commission elect from its members a chairperson and vice-chairperson. The rules and bylaws of the planning commission state that the commission officer shall consist of a chair, vice-chair, and the secretary, and that the secretary shall be a city employee. And typically, as a city planner, I serve in that role with the help of Robin, of course. The duties of the chairperson are to preside at all meetings, appoint committees, rule on procedural questions, report official communications referencing positive and negative opinions, and clarify official documents, certify official documents involving the authority of the commission. The vice-chairperson, the duties are to assume the full powers of the chairperson in their absence and to carry out other duties assigned by the commission. The duties of the secretary are to keep attendance records, minutes, notify members of meetings, prepare agendas for the meetings, and maintain all the files of the commission records and reports. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is call for nominations from the floor for the position of chair.
I'd like to nominate Dave Peralt for chair.
Are there any other nominations for the position of chair?
And that is allowed to renew?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are you willing to?
I was holding out.
Your husband has some will against it.
So, are you willing to accept?
I am willing now. There was some email discussion about that. I'm happy to serve it again. Other times will come for others soon.
Okay. Hearing no other nominations, the nominations for chair will be closed. All in favor of Mr. Dave Peralt continuing in the position of chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
All right. Thank you all for the support.
At this time, I'd like to call for nominations from the floor for the position of vice-chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cham Light to continue as Mr. Vice.
Would there be any other nominations for chair? All right. Are you willing to accept this?
I would be happy to. Glad to be happy.
Hearing no other nominations, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mr. Cham Light serving in the position of vice-chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Any opposed? No? Okay. So, Chair Peralt, I'll turn it back over to you. It's more of a procedural matter, but we do need for you to vote me in as the secretary.
Well, I would like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Tom Martin as secretary for the planning commission. Are there any other, the only other nomination would be for other workers, but I'm going to assume that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And also, I mentioned this in email, but thanks also to Mark this past year, he did fill in ably for Cham and I when we were both gone. Much appreciated. Our second item is the approval of the minutes from December 14th, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the head motion.
A second?
A second.
Okay. And Kinsey, the rule of thumb is if you're absent for a meeting, then you just abstain during the approval. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And I think we have two absences, is that right, from that meeting? Okay. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Our next item is our public hearing item. This is the petition of Custom Structures Architectural Design and Build LLC to rezone approximately 8,500 acres located at 2425 Carroll Avenue from I-3 Heavy Industrial District to B-5 General Business District to allow the property to be used for commercial purposes. Tom, are you taking this one?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. I told you I would forget. But we do have an announcement from Tom here.
I'll be abstaining from this conflict of interest.
Okay. We will hunt you down when we're done. Thanks for the reminder.
All right. Chair Peralt, members of the planning commission. The future land use map recommends an employment to land use for this area, as you can see on the screen. These land uses are included, are intended to include light to heavy manufacturing, research and development, flex space, and large-scale office uses. Business service uses are also appropriate if sized and designed in scale with the existing employment area. This property was annexed into the city in 1908 and has been zoned for industrial uses since 1930. The city implemented zoning in the late 20s, about '28, '29. So, its entire history, it's been zoned for an industrial use. The proposed rezoning to B-5 conditional would allow the use of the property as a fitness center, which is currently operating in violation of the zoning ordinance. A change in occupancy permit was denied by the zoning administrator back in June of 2016. So, this rezoning would allow that use to remain. The proposed rezoning would also, as proffered, allow the majority of uses currently allowed in the B-5 district. It's important for the commission to remember that the B-5 district is the most intense commercial classification within the city of Lynchburg. The property currently, and as proposed for development, would not meet the access management standards of the city zoning ordinance as adopted in February of last year. The property contains two driveway entrances now along James Street with approximately 66 feet between those. Being that James Street is classified as a arterial street, the zoning ordinance would require 330 feet of separation for those entrances. Carroll Avenue is classified as a arterial, a local collector rather, and would require at least 150 feet of separation from the intersection. And as you can see, this existing entrance is right at the intersection of James and Carroll Avenue. City staff has had numerous conversations with the representative and the property owner, and the property owner has proffered that they would cable that entrance when it's not needed. They would like to keep that entrance because they also have a sign shop on the property and that would allow them to be able to back their trucks into the loading dock. The problem with that is that that's not going to be an enforceable proffer for staff. You know, we can't be out there every day, 24 hours a day, seeing that the cable's up. That combined with the fact that they have left in so many of the B-5 uses that we would never get another site plan review. So, not being able to enforce the closing of that entrance, having this changed to an even more intense use, the potential for safety concerns with that entrance being open and traffic going into Carroll Avenue with those blind spots, we just do not feel comfortable in making an approval, a recommendation of approval for this rezoning. So, with existing future land use map, the existing zoning in the area, and the safety concerns related to the entrances, the planning division does recommend that the commission does not approve this rezoning. We also have with us today Ms. Maggie Cosman, who is the city's transportation engineer, if you'd like to ask more detailed questions about traffic safety.
Great. Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of the petition? If you could come forward and sign in and state your name, we'd be happy to inform you.
Kinsey, just to let you know, we haven't normally timed the presentation, but we started doing it a couple of months ago.
Sure. That's right. Yeah, it won't be long.
My name is Jamie White. I'm with White Engineering Design, and I'm representing the client, Scott Elliott with Custom Structures Architectural Design and Build. And we've been working on trying to accommodate this site particularly for one use that is in that building right now. And this is a building that has been there for many years, and it really had fallen into some tougher times. It was pretty much an eye sore on that corner to look at. The developer went in and made extensive renovations to the exterior of that building to make it a more attractable, attractive piece of property, divided it out to have two tenants in that building, and has really improved that intersection as far as looks and uses. I think for a long time, that corner was like a beehive. You know, it really looked pretty bad in that corner. So, the owner had taken, you know, extensive revenue and put it in that building to make it something usable and rentable. And when, I guess sometime early last year, the sign shop, and they are by right in that area now, and they are on the right-hand side of the building that is closest to Carroll Avenue with the loading dock and all. They currently occupy that side, and they are a by right business that is in there. The only issue that came up is when the, there was a guy that is working in, as a fitness center, I guess is what the classification of the use is. The gentleman does individual classes with, or small groups. So, it's not like it's, you know, large people coming in and out. It's not like a Gold's Gym or anything like that. This is more of a one-on-one or very small group interaction, fitness-type of activities that are going on. And I know when he came to that building and looking to do his building, I guess his occupation permit or whatever he needed, he was denied because it was classified as a fitness center. We've worked with city staff and looked at a number of options to make this site safer, because we realized that, you know, there's existing entrances there that are at the corner that are unsafe as they are, and they've been that way for probably 50, 60, 70 years. And we looked at shortening it up, an entrance as close on James Street that's close to the intersection, because right now, it's pretty much wide open except for a telephone pole that's there. We're going to shorten that up to 30 feet. And the owner has proffered to, you know, cable the other entrance and only open it when they need to make truck deliveries to help it safe along Carroll Avenue, because there is a site distance issue there. What I would like to say is, you know, we're taking a building that really has, probably would go down and probably be demolished if somebody didn't come in and take care of that building and build it up. The owner went in there and did those repairs, and we're looking to make it safe. Now, technically, if we don't get rezoning for this, that doesn't mean that this building is going to change, or it doesn't mean that any entrances will change, or anything like that, because technically, he could find another person that could rent out that space and be by right in an I-3 zoning. So, we look at this project as something that we would do nothing to, and he could find another tenant. Or we can approve a B-5 zoning and make some improvements to make the intersection there a little safer. So, obviously, we would propose that, you know, make as much improvement as possible with it still being usable for what it needed to be, because without the rezoning, one tenant will have to leave and they'll just put it back on the market and have somebody else come in and rent it. But the guy that is in the gym there now likes being there. He likes the location right off of 29, so it's very convenient for him, and he would like to stay there if at all possible. And I can answer any questions if there are any questions.
Okay. Well, we may have some questions for you when we close our meeting. Thank you. You can probably, well, you can go back to your seat. We'll call you up. Yes, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Any opposed? All right. At this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions for city staff or the petitioner?
I was just going to, I just wanted to hear a little bit more from the traffic safety viewpoint, if you could come up and, you know, that's always one of our biggest concerns is, you know, exactly what the impact of, if any changes in the status is going to, how it's going to affect the safety issues. And I don't know if you'd like to get into some detail on that or not.
Absolutely. As Jamie mentioned, there is a site distance issue on Carroll Avenue, and as he also mentioned with the industrial use, there could be a different industrial use there, and there would be no entrance improvements proposed. And we do like that there are some entrance improvements shown on the property. The issue is with opening it to B-5 zoning, it's commercial zoning, high-level commercial zoning, which is more traffic than the industrial use zoning. And that's where the issue becomes with additional traffic using this area, which has already got some site distance and turning movement issues.
You know, I know there's always sort of an interesting dance between staff and petitioners on issues like this, and I don't want to compromise any conversations that maybe, you know, should not, you know, shouldn't be looked upon as admissions of things of this nature. But I know the petitioner said that he had talked with you about various proffers, and of course, we can't force a proffer. That's something that's got to be voluntary from their perspective. But was there anything you thought that could address this issue from a safety viewpoint that was discussed that was not proffered?
There was not anything discussed that is not proffered. What we had talked about is what's on here, chaining that entrance on Carroll Avenue. The issue we have is we don't have an enforcement mechanism for it.
Now, if they were to get the rezoning, they would chain the entrance on the right. They would close the entrance closest to Carroll. I can't remember.
Carroll.
Carroll. And only the small entrance in the upper left would be open?
No. They plan to keep both of the James Street entrances open.
Oh, I thought that was illegal to have them so close together.
In order to access the truck dock there, they said they needed both entrances open.
I see. So, even though that's not considered safe, you allow, you would allow that if this went through?
In order to provide the industrial use that's still available there so that they could continue to function. Yes.
Looking at the industrial uses available, I mean, there are so many that are, that it could be. I mean, it could, geez. I'm just thinking they would, I mean, you could have an auto repair shop there, right? And that would probably have more traffic than they have now with the fitness center. But they could, isn't that right?
That's true, but if you look at all the other B-5 uses that they intend to allow on that property, like restaurants and retail and so on.
Right.
Would generate a great deal more traffic.
Okay. I agree with that.
Just to put a finer point on that, just to take a couple of comments. Is the issue, they're backing trucks in there, and those are both blind cars? Is that kind of where that?
Yes.
But none of that goes away. I mean, based on where this thing's configured, none of that goes away. And quite frankly, I mean, you could make a case that even if you took the Carroll Street, even if you could take the Carroll Street exit, entrance rather, and move it further down Carroll Street, you're still going to have that whole blockage and blind curb issue because you, just because that happens to be the way the road lays out on either side of that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just to go a little bit further, if I may.
Because I'm getting ready to ask you, so this is perfect.
The trucks is really not that big of the issue. The issue is, when you open this up to B-5, we have no assurances that this is going to stay chained and closed, because we will not be able to enforce that.
Is that a function of the number of cars coming through?
Correct.
Or is it a function of blocking those entrances?
Well, because then, when you open this up to B-5 uses, we have no way to enforce this, you're going to have more traffic that's going to potentially be coming out of this entrance onto Carroll Avenue to a blind spot. So, that creates a safety concern. With the I-3 zoning, there's only going to be so much traffic generated. When you change it to B-5 and you get all of these more uses.
Right.
That are more higher turnover uses that generate more trips, not being able to enforce the closing of this entrance, you create the safety. Per the zoning ordinance right now, this should be closed, period.
Period.
No questions about it. It should be closed.
And that, to be honest with you, Tom, is my biggest issue, because even if you closed Carroll Street, you still got, you know, you still, forget the distances, you've still got a problem with those other two entrances on James Street.
Correct.
Period. Okay.
So, if they were to do any of these I-3 uses, that's what it is, isn't it? I-3, that are marked with a P, they could do those without any, asking anybody?
As long as it didn't require a site plan, they could do any use in the I-3.
And when does it require a site plan?
If they're adding parking, building additions.
Okay.
Those types of things.
And at that point, if it required a site plan, then you would be able to say?
Close the entrance.
You've got to close this or that. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It's in a, they have done a tremendous job improving that building, the appearance of it. The issue with that building is it's in a peculiar location. The topography, the majority of the property is higher and not really usable. You know, they're kind of shoehorned in between the railroad and the expressway and the ramps. The loading dock's not in the ultimate location. So, we're just, staff is not, even though we tried to work with the representative and the property owner, planning staff, and I don't think engineering staff either could get to a point where we were 100% comfortable recommending approval on this because of the unknowns in the future with all those B-5 uses.
In looking at the future land use map, which we always try and use as a guide, this is one of those cases where the designations are different from both the current and the proposed zoning, being employment to, and you discussed this in the petition. Employment to can be considered more of a broader category that both the current and the proposed zoning would kind of fall under?
In a perfect world, you know, in a perfect world, if this was a more usable piece of property, if the B-5 use would need to be supporting the employment uses. So, an office or an accountant that was doing accounting work for the industries in the area. You know, this is, they're, they basically took the entire B-5 list of permitted uses and pulled out a few things like single-family homes.
Okay.
Public utilities, things that aren't going to go there. So, if you look at it, they're opening up a B-5 piece of property here. You could put a used car lot on it, automotive, you know.
So, it really doesn't fit with the future land use map?
It doesn't fit with the land use or with the area.
Okay. We just don't see that very often where the designations don't match up.
Yeah.
In fact, I've never seen the employment to mentioned in any of our.
Well, and the other problem with this area is there, there's, you know, on the other side of Carroll Avenue is where Liberty, where Thomas Road had some athletic fields, and then you've got scare mayor.
Yeah.
So, really, what would it be supporting?
Mm-hmm.
It's a destination-type business is what it would become, and it's not sized or located appropriately to be a destination business.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts?
So that we can talk?
Yes. Yeah, the public hearing's been closed, so we can share our thoughts as we wish.
Ladies first.
No.
Answer.
I'm inclined to agree with the planning staff that the B-5 would be a bad thing to do right now because of the potential uses. So, there's, the main thing that sways me is that there's so many good uses for it as an I-3, they can do so many things with it that I don't think we're really boxing them in too much. It eliminates this fitness center, but it allows them to do a whole lot of other things.
Yeah. And that's sort of where I've come from. You know, we try to, I think we try to be business-friendly on this commission and try to, you know, to encourage the development of business activities and be reasonable. You know, there's always a red flag when we get a concern raised from a safety issue. And, you know, I drove, I knew that intersection fairly well, but I drove past there again and, boy, we do have a blind section out there. I hate to say no when somebody's trying to continue to improve a business, but like Nancy, I am influenced by the fact that they are still going to have some options, and it's not like it's a dead use of the property. And wish them all the well in that regard, but I'm going to vote to, not to grant the petition for the reasons I've just stated.
I'm going to vote with the city planning commission reluctantly, because I don't like to see businesses be turned away. But I agree wholeheartedly that there's plenty of uses as an I-3 for that building. As I looked at the proffers and, you know, there's a whole bunch of things. We opened up a quagmire forest. We didn't go with the B-5 route there. And I was very concerned about the fitness center and a shame on me that never dawned on me six, seven months ago that it wasn't supposed to be there to start off with, because I almost hit someone taking my wife to work as they were doing sprints up and down the off-ramp on 29 at about 5:30 in the morning. So, it is a very hard-to-sea place. There were people running with headphones or whatever. They don't hear you. You don't see them. You're coming down the hill. You know, it's just a dangerous proposition, and I was just very surprised at, more shocked with myself that I did not realize that it wasn't supposed to be there to start off with. And so, I'm not in favor of having this changed to B-5 to allow it to be there.
Yeah. We often don't get petitions that planning is recommending denial, and without getting rid of the responsibility that it's our vote, I do respect them and their expertise when they do, the few times they do come forward saying that they recommend denial. And although I love seeing these types of buildings renovated and being in use, I think this is something we, I'm in agreement with the other comments here. Any other thoughts?
One thought I have is I would like for the fitness center to not be listed on the I-3 list of permitted uses. It didn't have a C or a P after it, but it shouldn't have been on the list, I don't think.
So, that's a zoning ordinance tweak?
Yes.
As they continue to revamp the?
Yes.
So, that's something to consider as that continues to get tweaked?
Well, I looked at the email stream between you and him. I'm trying to figure it out there. So, I went to, I looked at page 399 to see what the thing is, and Appendix A lists all the possible uses and gets all the zones there. And I thought, okay, what was going on? I could see the C and the P and the blank, but I couldn't find a notation saying, if it ain't marked, you can't use it.
Well, it's not a permitted use, and they've known for quite some time that it's not a permitted use.
I'm just saying that in comment with response to Commissioner Martin.
Again, we do, yeah, we do have a few tweaks to make to the ordinance.
All right. Do we have a motion?
If I can get my thing to work.
I can make the motion, I think. But before we do, Cham from the legal, stand. But before we do, jam from your legal standpoint there. Are we voting, when we vote aye for denial, does that mean it will be denied?
That's how I would interpret a deny vote, since it's a, well, it's a denial from city staff though, but it's still a petition from the, from the property owner.
All right, the recommended motion would be to deny.
To deny.
So, if, if the planning commission chooses to use that motion, the motion would be to deny and a, and a aye vote would be
Would be a denial.
to deny the protest.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Then I'll, then I'll go ahead and make the motion that based on proceedings, findings of fact, on the planning commission recommending, the city council recommend denial of the petition of the Scott Elliott to rezone the property located at twenty-four-twenty-five Carroll Avenue from I three Heavy Industrial to B five City General Business District conditional.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor to recommend denying?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the recommendation to deny passes. Mr. White, we appreciate your frankness with presenting this petition and discussing your options. It's always nice getting to hear the entire frame of thought. And remember, we are only making a recommendation to city council. So, I encourage you to attend their, their public hearing for the official decision. Thank you and good luck. Any other business items? Oh, yeah, thank you. Let's get. Here we go. Yeah, come on in. Robin did send an email about the transportation meeting tomorrow evening at five, just across the road. I've been to those before and those are typically, it's not an hour-long meeting with presentations. You just go and you walk around and you make comments. I'm assuming it's that type of a, that type of a meeting.
It's across what road?
It's, it's in the
Main Street.
Across Main Street. And the transportation, I forget the floor, the bank of the James Building and I forget the floor that they're on. But all the information is in the email that Robin sent. And those are good to get updates on what the transportation folks are looking at. And since that is something that we often consider when we're making our, our planning decisions. So, I would encourage folks to attend that if you can. That's from five to six, I think. Any other business items?
I can't be at that meeting, is there any way we can get some kind of email summary of what you're doing?
Yes, please do. And you, you can fill in the details of the location too.
Yes, it's at the make of the James on the twelfth floor. And from four to five, the technical transportation committee meeting will be meeting, which I'm a member of to represent the city. It's all the local jurisdiction, transportation or planner groups are gonna be at that meeting and we're getting a presentation on what the open house will be. And immediately following that meeting is the open house. And just like you said, it is a open house format with boards up and you can ask questions. So, I'm sure there'll be a PowerPoint presentation that they'll be presenting to the group, so I can pass that on to the commission.
That would be great.
I will be happy to.
Yeah, and we have had representatives from the transportation group come periodically to give us updates. And that's always welcome if we're having a slow time, if there's been some major ground covered that you guys feel is important to let us know about, we certainly welcome that.
Does this cover the Main Street bridge?
No, actually, this is part of the regional plan, looking at freight and regional transportation throughout the whole area. This is not just a city of Lynchburg initiative or study, it's a regional study.
Great, thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other items? All right, motion to adjourn?
Zanlu?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.